Good evening. I'd like to have the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 11th, 2017, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Jeff Lewis's excuse and I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. And please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per Board policy, we allow up to fifteen minutes of resident comment. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment tonight?
I would.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Angela Beer. My address is nine zero two five South Fairbrook Court in Franklin.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Dr. Angela Beer. I'm involved with the school district as a volunteer at Southwood Glen Elementary and is co-president of the Franklin Education Foundation. However, I come to you today simply as a parent. My main concern happens to do with implementation strategies of the new curricula over the past and several upcoming years. As you may or may not be aware, implementation of the literacy curriculum was dependent on significant efforts from volunteer fundraisers in the form of PTAs and PTOs at schools. Tens of thousands of dollars raised by parent volunteers went toward bringing this curriculum to almost full implementation. Most parents were happy to have their efforts go towards something so tangible and frankly so lovely. The books are beautiful and the kids are excited by them. However, this fall rolled around and many parents were surprised to see that things had changed in order to allow for the new curriculum to be implemented. Art time was cut, next year comes music. Is this really the best thing for her kids? I don't know. We weren't shown the data in advance or given a chance to voice an opinion on this matter. Why? Because that's the territory of experts. And this is absolutely true. While some parents in the district have experience as educators and curriculum designers, most of us do not. So why bother involving parents and community members in such critical conversations? They really don't know what they're talking about, anyway. I was tempted by this argument many a time as a pediatrician, usually after I'd spent thirty or more minutes talking through the merits of routine vaccination with a hesitant parent. As I felt increasingly behind schedule, the paternalistic approach of "Trust me, I know what's best for your child" was so very tempting. However, this approach is seen as outdated and ultimately destructive to the physician-patient relationship. The involvement of parents in high-stakes conversations is, in my opinion, important for three key reasons. It preserves a relationship that is in the best interest of the child. It establishes buy-in from parents, which can help make future critical discussions easier. And it is ethically the right thing to do. Did it always work? No. Were parents' arguments and concerns always worthwhile? No. But I lost only one patient to disagreement over vaccines. The nature of parents' current relationship with the school district feels very similar to the outmoded paternalistic approach I outlined above. I believe this is wrong. Ultimately, my frustration around the curriculum issue has nothing to do with the curricula being implemented. They seem great, well-vetted, and well-researched. However, it has to do with communication. Your constituents receive a great deal of information from administration and the school board. However, it's rarely presented in a forum that allows any questions to be asked or dialogue to be initiated. This needs to change. Or what? I don't know exactly. Probably, most parents won't notice. Most of your dedicated parents will continue to volunteer. However, the core of volunteers is beginning to feel some frustration. In summary, as a parent, I'm feeling increasing frustration at the one-way communication and decision-making that I experience as a district parent. I know I and some of fellow parents from my school are not alone in this feeling. I would request that a board member consider sponsoring the addition of future agenda items to specifically address improved opportunities for the true exchange of information between the board, the administration, and your key constituents' parents. Second, I request a future discussion of how curriculum choice and implementation processes can be improved specifically around the areas of communication with these parents and interested community members. While we may only represent twenty-five percent of your voting constituency, we certainly heavily have a lot of proverbial skin in the game in terms of time, talent, and treasure. The board's update in the city newsletter letter included your goals for the upcoming year and plans to, quote, "visit our schools to see learning in action and reporting back at meetings about the great work being accomplished by students and teachers," end quote. May I suggest that these observations and report backs would be significantly enhanced with direct observations for areas of improvement and solicitation of opinions obtained. Finally, in no way do I want to detract from the presentation that you'll be hearing about the amazing things going on at Southwood Glen Elementary. I'm enormously proud and lucky to work with these teachers and the principal, Mrs. Cody. And regardless of the actions that you choose to take, she and they will continue to have my tireless support and admiration. Thank you.
Excuse me, Angie.
Yes?
If you wouldn't mind, can you read your first two lines again?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Where I introduced myself?
Well, now, you introduce yourself. When you started your...
As you may or may not be aware, implementation of the literacy curriculum depended on significant efforts from volunteer fundraisers in the form of PTAs and PTOs. Tens of thousands of dollars raised by parent volunteers went toward bringing this curriculum to almost full implementation.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments tonight? Any other comments? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I'll keep my comments short here. You heard some of them at the last meeting. Again, my name is Ryan McAdams, eighty-one fifty South River Lane. My daughter attends Robinwood Elementary School. Just piggybacking again off what was just said, this is a growing issue. As I mentioned before, more and more parents are talking about this issue. We're talking to teachers. We're hearing from teachers that this is an issue. I understand the data, and I listen. I went back and watched the board meeting last time with the presentation of the data. What I'm afraid that this board is starting to do is get lost in data. If you are only looking at data, if you are only looking at test scores, you are not understanding the impacts that this is having on our children. When you have children that are in classrooms all day long for long periods of time, especially when you're talking about first, second, third graders, I've never seen a school district that has one recess period for first, second, and third graders. We do. Most school districts in the area do not. They have multiple throughout the day. We're seeing more and more issues with this, and I'm hoping that the school board is starting to listen and respond to this. One of the major tenants in the school board, you know, operating procedure, whatever you want to call it, talks about the involvement of the community in two-way communication, two-way communication between the school board, community, and teachers. I'm afraid that we're hearing a lot of one-way conversation, that we are coming here and we are beginning to talk, and it is not being listened to. It is not being heard, and it is not being responded to. I highly suggest and ask that you please start involving the community, taking our concerns seriously, and being considerate and considering what we are talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? All right. Thank you very much. Item four is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any discussion? Hearing, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item five is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
I'd like to announce that last week was Wisconsin School Board Week, and it's actually a time for us to pause and to thank our school board members for their countless hours of service to the community and to the children of this district. So, we're really proud of Franklin Public Schools, and the work that you do significantly contributes to that. So, to thank you, I'd like to provide each of you with a small gift of new spirit wear at the parade. Ms. Witkowski was admiring my spirit wear, so I was able to acquire some of that for you tonight. So, again, on behalf of the school district and the employees...
Thank you.
If there's a name on here.
Yeah, don't give me...
I'd like to thank all of you.
Thank you.
If I could just ask the audience to please give him a round of applause.
Thank you. Anything more?
That's my answer.
Okay. I have an announcement, and thank you very much, Dr. Miller. I have an announcement. Marching band, Franklin High School marching band, is they have their state competition on Saturday in Whitewater. That's their final performance of the year. And so, I have a senior in the marching bands, and my other kid was in there, so it's six years involved in the program, so near and dear to my heart. But they scored their highest score last week, actually in school history, and so that's something they're very proud of, so. I had nothing to do with it. Actually, I do help out with the progress. Probably something, but... No, it's a growing program, and you can see it from grade school on up and expanding at the middle school, and then there's just more and more kids involved. I think they have a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and eighty kids on the field, and I think when we started, they were around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five, so. And they perform at the halftime, and they'll be performing Friday at halftime, so if anyone's going to the game, but... So, shout out to the marching band. Thank you.
They're great in the parade, too.
Yeah.
I also helped out at the children's consignment sale that was at Robinwood last Saturday. I think it was a great fundraising event, get a chance to talk to parents that show up, and also work with some of the fine volunteers from the high school, talk to real students. Also, I think there's an event on Monday, October sixteenth, on Broadway, is being produced at the high school. Might be a fun event to attend. And the foundation is also has the Grand Slam Gala, which is November eighteenth. Hope that's on your calendars, and there's plenty of ways to participate. It's pure tasting, we don't have to partake in that. There's different ways to get on board and help out.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I've got quite a few. I volunteered at the Countrydale Cougar Chase, which I know several of the schools have running events, and it was just great to see all the children getting a lot of exercise, and they sure can run. And I attended the State of the City's Breakfast last Friday with Franklin and Oak Creek mayors, and also there with me was Valley, Nick and Rachel Fredericks, our Community Experience Coordinator. And the hot topic that morning was that with Foxconn coming and how we should think about the near future and how it will impact our city's population. And then I attended the SWSA, Southwestern Wisconsin Schools Alliance, meeting yesterday morning with Dr. Miller. And I think we'll be considering adding an agenda item occasionally in the future for the board to discuss possibly resolutions regarding legislation, but we'll talk about that. And then Senator Craig and Representative Skoronsky dropped in at the ECC on Monday for a brief visit while they were visiting the Business Park and Kears Playground. Then I attended this Countrydale PTO meeting last night, and there was some interesting conversation about the distribution of communication materials and electronic communication, which I'll also discuss with Dr. Miller and Mrs. Elhause in some time, and then possibly with the board in the future. And then there's a reminder for the board that our regional meeting is in Peewaqui next Tuesday, the seventeenth. Arrival time between five-thirty and six o'clock PM. Any other announcements? All right, thank you. School board calendar, we have a regular board meeting Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, 2017, here at the ECC at six o'clock PM, and a regular board meeting Wednesday, November eighth, here at the ECC at six o'clock PM. Item seven, school board liaison reports, personnel and policy, policy number sixty-three eighteen, child at risk of not graduating. This is an action item. Dr. Miller?
So, this is a policy that is on our review list. One of the reasons it's there is because the last time it was looked at by the board was two thousand and three. I also thought it would be timely to put it on the agenda today because you're going to hear the at-risk report today. You'll see there are not a lot of changes here. Specifically, there's just one. The way the policy was written before, we indicated that the board would receive a review or a report in August, which is not essentially the best time for us to do that. We wanted to change that to annually, to have it at this time of year when we have more accurate information about the students. But I am going to defer to Ms. Preman to share additional information about this policy and any, respond to any questions that you may have about it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Miller. I just wanted to let you know that we looked at the timing of the report, and that's the only change that we're recommending. Part of the documents that you'll be looking at today include a summary of students that are at risk, and it gives an update on the students that were previously identified and their progress, as well as new students that are identified. And we typically, we have the information of our exiting students or the final data from last year as of June, but we don't have the information of any newly identified students. So that is the reason for the change in terms of having the document reflect that we really do report either in September or October.
Thank you.
Can I just point out one thing in the policy? Change in August to annually in the second paragraph, but it does reference August fifteenth and the first. Did you want that changed to fall, or...
No, the August fifteenth portion is in regard to the report being, or the plan being completed. That is a statutory requirement that it's done by August fifteenth. The part of reporting to the board is not a requirement of law, so that's why we're making that change, but keeping the other at the required time.
I see. Thanks.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the revised board policy sixty-three eighteen.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Is there any discussion? I would just like to ask that one of your notes was that in changing the meeting to the reference in the last paragraph to annually, so that you'd update us with the most current information. If that information changes and the report is due August fifteenth by state statute, then do you let them know about an update, or is that not required?
There are two different processes. So, the plan is updated annually by August fifteenth. We are sharing the plan with you that was already developed by August fifteenth. The reporting of it, though, includes the summary of students and the update of the newly identified students.
Okay.
So, the plan itself doesn't change, just the summary report of the newly identified students.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Six, zero. Thank you. And then we'll move on to school board, item seven B, board liaison reports. Do we have any reports? I do just want to mention one item under school board liaison reports, that on an upcoming meeting, we will be having a discussion regarding school board liaison reports and what the board expects, the board and the administration expects, the expectations are regarding those. So, maybe you can think about that. It might be, do you think the next meeting, possibly?
Yes, we would be ready for the next meeting. We'll just check to see how busy the agenda is for the next meeting, but we would be ready. And perhaps I can send some questions out to the board to respond to as well, so we can bring all that information at one time.
I was also thinking that one thing that might be good to have under this agenda item would be, because of our goal, would be school visits, instead of having them up under announcements, because since we will be reporting back on it, so it might be a more appropriate place to add that. If there's no objection.
I don't have any.
Then item eight, reports and presentations, eight-day school report, Southwood Glen, and we have Mrs. Christine Cody here.
So, again, I am Christine Cody, the very proud principal of Southwood Glen Elementary, and I am very excited to be here tonight. I have a full entourage with me, because that's how we roll at Southwood Glen. We're one big team. So, tonight, we're here to share with you our journey to becoming a community of avid readers and powerful writers. And I'm not seeing our presentation up yet, so do I have to do something online?
No, I have to do something already.
I was so excited. So, as Mr. Nielsen is taking care of that, I'll do some quick introductions. Like I said, we really are on a journey to becoming a community of avid readers and powerful writers, and this is great work that's exciting and happening in all of our classrooms, grades K through six. But tonight, we're going to focus on our youngest authors and readers. So, I have our kindergarten through second-grade team with us. We have a couple of members who couldn't be here this evening, but I have with me, starting on the end, Lisa Bart, a cross-categorical team teacher, Amy Stack, first-grade teacher, Alex Maurer, kindergarten teacher, and Lisa Ledry, first grade, Chris Goodman, kindergarten, and Hailey Sheppard, second-grade teacher. And of course, we have four very special guest authors with us this evening as well. You will be hearing from Julia, Avery, Kamela, and Shaheer. They're kindergarten through the second-grade authors. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the staff, so they can share our journey with you.
Christine, do you want my computer? Let's go. Just mute my notifications, it's getting so annoying. It should be okay. It's crazy, the Apple products.
It must be easy, I think.
Oh, there we go. Yay!
That's how we could win it, okay?
Check out what you're doing.
Turn.
Share table.
Christine, walk in.
Turn.
I'm a wolf male.
So, we wanted to present to you tonight in the same way we would conduct a mini lesson with our students. So first, we always start out with our connection, and this is a way to get our students hooked and interested in what we're going to teach them. So here's a short video that shows a glimpse of what our readers and writers workshop looks like and how the students feel about writing.
If what I am is what's in me, then I'll stay strong, that's who I'll be. And I will always be the best me that I can be. There's only one me, I admit. Have a dream, I'll follow it. It's up to me to try.
What are you learning about?
I'm learning about this thing. He's a mouse.
What are you learning about?
I'm learning about that yellow one. Looks like... I'm learning about that, the purple ones are pretty.
I'm learning about...
What is this?
That guy's white there.
Oh, I'ma keep my head up high. Keep on reaching high. Never gonna quit, I'll keep it stronger. And nothing's gonna bring me down. Never gonna stop, gotta go. Because I know I'll keep it stronger. And what I am is...
I was reading the tree book, and it told about what it felt like and what the roots did and stuff. So, I wanted to add something to tell it I felt like.
Once I start writing, I don't stop. To my page, to my page, all my pages are super...
That we have to add labels, words, and pictures.
And the door, and the sky, it's my sun right here.
And tell me, what will your word say?
I had fun at Southwood Glen.
I'm working on adding more details and adding more transitive words to break up all the I's, so that I can say "as soon as I" and "after that," so my readers can actually get more into the story, and instead of just saying "I, I, I."
I'm working on making my beginning better and better by rewriting it over and over again.
I was doing dialogue, because my story would have more action than just...
I think it also would incorporate some other people into the story instead of just one main character.
I'm revising and making our stories overall better than last year. We're trying to revise our stories and make them better.
My favorite thing about writing is picking out the type of stories I write. One of my favorite stories that I write is narratives, which is about what happened in my life, and I add a lot of details about what happened in my life in that time of the story.
My favorite thing about writing is probably putting detail into the story, because it is actually really fun to me.
Thing about writing is getting to write all your ideas and stories that you have down on a paper and then getting to revise them and get to publish it, and it's just fun to do.
So then after the connection, we go to the teach point, and the teach point gives us the purpose for the lesson and the work that the students will be doing for that day. So we always start like, so we would say like today, but since we are doing it for you guys, I'll say like, so tonight, we want to teach you about readers and writers workshop. One way we can do this is by sharing our teacher and student growth. We do this to build passionate, independent, problem-solving readers and writers. So within that teach point, you can see at the top, we always have the skill, we list what the strategy, and then what the purpose is for that lesson.
All right. Following the connection in our teaching point, we go into the teach. The teach is really the heart of our lesson and what we're really going to be going into with the students and what our job is for the day. So, we wanted to teach you today a little bit about our journey with Teachers College. So we're starting out with year one and what our journey was. When we went into this journey, we had feelings of...
When we went into this journey, we had feelings of anticipation, vulnerability, and collaboration. So within year one, we found out that we were first going to be the district project school for units of study. And we got to work really right alongside somebody from the Teachers College.
Things we did when we were working with the representative from Teachers College is we always had a study and learning session. They taught us something for about 45 minutes to an hour. Then we went to watch them work with the kids. For our second or third time we were here, we worked with the kids in one of our classrooms. And we took all of that learning and tried to make it a little bit better the next time they came and just kept scaffolding on that. And then the last thing that was kind of fun, we call it a traveling road show. We went to all the other elementary schools and told them about our experience because it was just, it was so amazing to be able to have the experts teach us how to do it.
And then as we continue being the project school with Teachers College in year two, the words that we describe our journey this year are trusting, refining, excited. And this year, we will continue with a focus in Readers Workshop.
So what our learning looks like this year, it's pretty close to last year. But like Lisa said, we are in Readers Workshop now. So we're still meeting with the Teachers College staff developer. We go for about an hour, 45 minutes, and we learn some new things. And then we watch her teach a lesson in one of our classrooms, and then we go back and debrief. So we've actually had the opportunity to already have her come in early this year. And so it's really nice to be able to get our new learning going and, you know, incorporate it through the rest of the school year.
So in this, we had so many wonderful successes. I'm going to share a little bit about kindergarten. So on there, you'll see it says our writing stamina. They may only be five and six years old, but it really is amazing if you came in our rooms by the end of the year, they're writing for 45 minutes and they are fully engaged in that writing. They know what their jobs are, who they can go to, where they can go in our rooms. I mean, their stamina is, it's amazing. In addition to that is the knowledge of writing for an audience. They really know who they are writing for and why they are writing. You'll hear them say like, "Oh, I have to fix that up because my reader wouldn't understand that." Or, "Oh, that doesn't sound right. Whoever's going to read my writing, it's not going to make sense to them." So that's a huge success from this program.
Another one of our successes is as teachers, our knowledge of the content. This is our second year with writing. So what's really cool is when we are conferring with our students individually, we may not have taught the skill yet, whole group, but because we've taught the curriculum already, we know, well, this is coming up, this is a skill I will be teaching, this student is ready for it, I can teach it to them now rather than having them wait until I am ready to teach it according to the curriculum. So, you know, it allows us to feel more comfortable with what we're teaching and individualize it even more to meet their needs.
Something else we are also seeing is as we're implementing reading this year, we see how well reading and writing really do go together. In some of the videos, you might have noticed students had books out while they were writing. So they are studying what they're noticing authors doing and trying out some of those craft moves in their own writing. So it's just great to see how those two pieces connect. Not only the structure for us as teachers, but what the students are taking on independently.
As a special education teacher, I get to co-serv in the kindergarten first and second grade classrooms. I get to work with all of these colleagues and very closely with pupil services staff, including OT, PT, and speech, and the parents. And together, using the progressions in the Readers and Writers Workshop, we are able to develop some really meaningful goals for our students. One of the students that comes to mind when I think of seeing the growth is a student that came into kindergarten with Chris Goodman that did not know the letters of her name. And this year in second grade, we are looking at possibly discharging her from special education. She's writing five pages in her writing books and including dialogue. So again, using those progressions to differentiate that learning and to scaffold that in has just been a really powerful thing for the special education students.
All right. So once our teach is over, we always get the students involved. We get them involved by doing a turn and talk. So here, students are sharing their work and they're also getting ideas from their partners. So here is a second grade turn and talk.
So the next part of the mini lesson concludes with like the link of it. And it kind of, the link ties the whole components, connects all the components of the mini lesson together. And we say the link before we send the students off to go and work individually or with partners. So we would end with, "Today and every day, we invest in the work of Readers and Writers Workshop to continue to build passionate, independent, problem-solving readers and writers." And also through the teach point and the link, we continue to say that throughout the whole lesson when we're working with them independently, when we're working with them in a strategy group. So that message is always coming across for the purpose.
Next, we have a share. So at the share of our Readers and Writers Workshop, students come back together and we share something that we are hoping that they will carry over to the next lesson or something that they did really well from that mini lesson in their independent work time. So today, we are so lucky to have a few authors from Southwood Blight. So we have Julia up first. You ready? So Julia is a kindergarten author and she is going to read to you today her book. I pulled it down here.
Do you want to have her stand maybe, Alex?
Yeah. Hold the mic. Either her stand or hold the mic. You want to stand up? Can you stand up? Can you stand up? Okay, I'll move it down. All right, go ahead and read it.
This is about Dr. Kate.
Ready?
Go ahead, get your finger. Yeah, read it aloud.
We were sitting on the carpet. We were private reading the books. We were partner reading the books.
And one of my kindergarten authors with kindergarten. Would you like to stand? All right.
Backyard.
I am playing. I am playing on the swing. I'm bouncing on the carpet. I'm swinging on the monkey wire. I'm going to the... I'm gonna go on a scooter ride. It's nighttime. I'm playing with my brothers outside. Me and my brothers are gonna play on the swing. I'm letting my duck out this morning.
Next, we have Camilla from first grade.
I love to read. Do you love to read? We, we had to get our book bins. It was my favorite time of the day. They, we, then we went to the carpet. Then we had to read. I read a book called Good Foods. It was good. We put our book bins away.
All right. And then we have our second grade author, Shaheer.
First, my dad drove us to Green Bay, Milwaukee, and I saw a friend. I was scared because when I play against a friend, he winch. Next, I played cricket. First, I got a bat that would fly and a ball, a tennis ball, and a wicket. Then I hit lots of sixes and fours and threes. Keep trying, I was so tired. So was he. Break, he said? No, I said. Oh, he said. You could hear the bat swinging, swinging. Swish, the bat went. Then we won and we high-fived the other team.
So thank you for letting us share a bit of our journey. I wish we could come back and share it even more at the end of the year. But obviously, we're really proud of our teachers and all of our students and everything that they've already accomplished in this area. So, thank you.
So a special thank you to Julia, Camilla, Avery, and Shaheer, and to all the teachers.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Cody.
Yeah, nice job.
And thank you, parents.
It's, I just want to make a comment. It's so nice to see the emphasis being put in this area when we live in 140-character world filled with emojis that they can, you know, they're still focusing in on this. And even saying, "He needed to make sure his sentence structure was different and not always start with "I". I thought that was some neat insight. So that was, thank you. That was neat to see.
And the expression too.
As those who would like to leave are leaving, we will move on to item 8B, the At-Risk Report with Dr. Amy Dwyer. And that is an action item. Hello.
Well, Amy sets that up. I just want to draw your attention to a couple of components of the report. The report will start with the report that we had talked about that's due by August 15th, which is the plan. She's going to be giving a summary of that. But along with this, we have the copy of the report for you. It also includes the risk data survey, the list of programs and services, as well as an update on students. So Amy, if you want to begin?
Hello. Tonight, I present the At-Risk Handbook: Procedures, Plans, and Supports, and a Review of the Data. I believe you were given ahead of time the At-Risk Handbook. So that's what needs to be approved this evening. The At-Risk Handbook includes the language as indicated in the policy 6318 that you talked about earlier tonight. The students are considered to be statutorily at risk if they meet two of the following criteria. If they're an adjudicated delinquent, truant, more than one year credit deficient, more than two years academically delayed, which we are defining as needs improvement on state testing, or are considered pregnant and parenting status. The students at the House of Correction are not included in our annual plan and not part of that data that we look at. Routinely, the school team is examining data to identify students who may show signs of disengagement. Last year, the high school team researched evidence-based interventions for truancy and school refusal. Some of what we learned are some examples of strategies that work, or teaching coping strategies to students who have some anxiety and/or depression, reward their positive attendance, conduct a comprehensive assessment, and most importantly, developing those relationships and teaming with the family and including outside resources. We learned that school refusal and truancy is a complex situation and unique for each student. All right. So last year, we identified seven students that were considered to be statutorily at risk. At the end of the school year, one of those students graduated. Three were no longer considered to be at risk, but are current students of Franklin High School. And then three of the students happened to move to another district. Some of the supportive strategies that we implemented last year had to do with student services support. The students received counseling from crisis intervention, regular family meetings, weekly or daily check-in, check-out, transition planning, referrals to outside agencies. Each student had a goal and we set reasonable steps for them to achieve and rewarded along the way. Some of them had modified schedules, project-based learning, and learned to self-monitor their attendance. Four of them had received specialized instruction. And three students attended, actually, five of them attended an alternative education study. Three were at Franklin High School, at St. Edward Academy. One was at Connects and the other was at Project Success, all for their credit attainment. So this year, so we started, we ended last year with the year students considered to be at risk. At the end of the school year, we reviewed the data over summer and we identified five students that are now considered statutorily at risk. All of these students are in the list because of their attendance and school refusal. All the students have an academic skill deficit. And three are in special education and to attend an alternative education study. Three are juniors and two are sophomores. This is our at-risk trend since 2006. That's when we started identifying students systematically and reporting on how many students continue to be at risk at the end of the year. And if you notice, we continue to maintain our number of students each year. What we found works, well, weekly, the Franklin High School RTI team monitors the progress of each student's data. We developed a response to truancy plan utilizing those evidence-based strategies and interventions. The plans are improved and modified based on our data and our discussion as a team and the feedback we got from the families and the students themselves. And we do our best to coordinate services and provide cost and collaboration for those students. What's our goal? That everyone will graduate. Questions?
Is that, are you done up here?
I'm done with that part.
I have a question. In your report that we received, and I don't know if Mrs. Preman might have, might have to tell, I don't know if you have this answer. It said the homework club for K to six is not at all the elementary schools. Why not? And is it needed at all the schools?
I think that each school designs, will design a program that seems to meet the needs of the students that they have, you know, at that particular school. So it does vary. We have some schools that are engaging in some practices that you won't see system-wise.
And that was on page 11, if any board members want to see it. And then on page 12, it talked about the working lunch... And then on page twelve, um, it talked about the, the working lunch for grades seven to eight, which I'm familiar with. And I know that works, but I'm wondering, do the kids have time to eat when they're studying? Because I, I know that it's used a lot. So, are they eating when they're working?
Students do not need to miss lunch to engage.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay. And then, um, page thirteen, the peer tutoring lab, grades nine to twelve. Do you, I'm curious about how many volunteers, uh, student volunteers you get for that. Does it work out well?
Yes, I think it works out well with part of the Prowls Layout. I don't know how much, the amount of tutors they have. They have a good amount each block it's offered and during goal block, and students take advantage of that. They receive tutoring in, um, in all subject areas.
And I just think, uh, there's a tremendous amount of services, but it just, to maintain our high standards, I think it's, it's a great report. And that, thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
I have one question.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, we have this vast array of services, but we're, we're talking about five kids? But really, this list of services touches a lot more kids than these five. So what, I'm sorry.
And the, and the services listed in the appendix are all, we list the services that are put in place to prevent students from becoming statutorily at risk.
To prevent them from?
Right, and what we do when they are considered to be at risk. So both, so it's preventative and then what we do. So that's what's in the address, what's all available to anyone to ensure that we don't have any students at risk.
But my question, I don't know if it's a question, but, so, those programs touch a lot more students than those? Is it five, is that the correct number, five? So, how many does it, those programs touch versus the five that? I'm just kind of trying to get an idea of the breadth of.
In the appendix, it indicates what students are eligible or targeted for the specific, um, intervention. So, the total amount that are receiving any sort of intervention, I am not able to tell you, but all students have the ability to access services.
Just, the report just seems so narrowly focused on these five when it's not a real.
So, if a student comes in and gets tutoring help, that's not really recorded or kept track of? They can just come in and get some help? Or would you have an idea of how many kids come in throughout the year and?
I believe they keep track.
They do keep track, okay.
And for what subject areas? But correct, and for purposes of reporting, statutorily at-risk students, it's very narrow. I mean, what a fortunate district, only have five students that are really considered at risk of not graduating.
It just seems, so that's right for the state. Those five are very narrowly, so the state's telling us, we have to report. This broad range of programs are really to address a lot broader, broader, uh, scope of, uh, needs out there. And we don't capture that number, which might be, I think, kind of interesting to know.
I can tell you now, there are thirty-five students at the high school level that attend an alternative school setting. So, those students are placed there because they're potentially at risk of not graduating, but they're not statutorily at risk.
We're engaging in a systems of support review at the high school level this year, and so in spring, we'll come back with a lot more information about the types of supports we're providing and how many students we touch, uh, as a result of those. So, we'll be, we'll have more comprehensive information in spring.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And I'm looking for a motion to approve the, it is twenty-seven eighteen At-Risk Report.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, any other discussion? If you're hearing out all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries six-zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, La.
Thank you.
And then, item eight C is the Community Education and Recreation Report with Mr. Brad Anderson and staff?
Staff.
Staff, come on up. Welcome.
I'd like to thank you for having us here this evening. Um, the, we went through a restructure. We had two people that left our employment over the past year. And we were able to restructure program responsibilities within our department to more fit. We had people doing multiple different things with, um, exercise classes, so we focused that into one, uh, job responsibility. So, we really took the ability to do that. And when you hear the reports that they give, they're going to go through some of the statistical information that was included in your packet, and they're going to highlight some of the things that they do that adds quality to the department. Really, within all of their reports, you're going to see that it really ties into the major principles of community education. Two of those main ones that we really focus on is lifelong learners. And we believe that anybody in the community should be able to learn. Um, that is children all the way through senior citizens and providing them with space and an opportunity to do that. And then, we also believe that, uh, the community has a responsibility and should have the benefit of utilizing their facilities. They're the taxpayers, they pay for these facilities. And I think when you see the report towards the end there with the facility usage, you're going to see that the taxpayers do use their facilities. Those also dovetail perfectly into, uh, some of the things that we've, are striving for this year with a better place to learn and a better community. The learning portion is, is a natural with lifelong learning. And the better community, um, giving people access to those programs and spaces, um, I think really builds a better community. So, with that being said, Shauna and Danielle are, are going to present.
Hi. Uh, Danielle and I, uh, we oversee the Kids Club and the Kids Camp Program. And, uh, I gave you some statistics, but I want to, um, break some things down for you. Is that you can see that our trends are, are going up. Uh, last year, our ending numbers and this year are numbers as of today, uh, or as of last week. So, we added a couple more since then. Um, and, and so, and so they're continually on moving up. Um, the other thing is, is that you can also see the Kids Camp Program. Uh, our Kids Camp Program is a summer program, and our numbers have moved up by thirty-four children this past summer. We gained thirty-four children that we served this summer. Um, what was really neat that Danielle and I worked on is that currently, we have five high school students, five former high school stur, students employed with us. And three of those students, or three of those staff were actually former Kids Club, uh, students that went through the program. Uh, we also have one parent of a Franklin High School student, and we have two grandparents working with us. Uh, so which is, which is kind of neat to see a whole generation with that. With Kids Camp, a lot of times, people think, oh, you know, let's go to Kids Camp, you know, you, I'm just going to get registered and I'm going to go. And that's how it is. That's not really how it, uh, works out, is that, uh, we have made a true effort to ensure that we're supplying the quality of care for the children, uh, that they get during the school time, that we get after school also. Uh, so, Mrs. O'Neil has been a great support to us. Is that, um, as we go through the registration process, they get registered, we pass along their names to Mrs. O'Neil. She sees if there's any allergies, um, if there's any medical concerns that we need to be aware of in the Kids Camp Program or Kids Club and Kids Camp Program. And then she trains us on what we need to know. So, there's EpiPen, there's Diastat, there's inhalers, um, children with, you know, some heart conditions. So, there's a lot of things that, that happen. Um, we've also started to work with Mrs. Preman, uh, with, um, helping us students that may have, uh, some needs that we are struggling with in the Kids Camp Program. How do we better serve these kids and, and the services that we can? And I don't want to say can't provide, but, um, don't have the ability to provide at, at this particular time. And so, we're always trying to expand, uh, that information.
This, this program has evolved a lot, and it really has gotten, thanks to Shauna and Danielle. When you look at it, uh, kids come into the school and the parents expect us to have the information that the schools have to make their kids' experience successful. Um, we are now, have the ability to look at that information, have it deciphered by the professionals, and tell us, how do we support those kids? So, you're going to see a child that may be in a classroom with special support and services, and we're able to mirror that in the after-school program or in the summer program, so that kid has the experiences and he's not trying to learn something new on how to fit in or how to do things. Um, it's very time-consuming. Um, the staff really go through trainings, and, and it, it sounds quite easy, but it's not. They go through that, there's, they're able to administer those type of drugs and stuff to kids. Um, they're confident in doing it, and it really makes for, uh, really a successful experience for those kids. So, that, that program has come a long way in really in, including everybody within the schools to be able to participate in it. Um, next is Paul Yonkey.
Can I ask a question on Kids Club?
Sure.
And I, I seem to have lost my, my, uh, quote on that. It, it said, Kids Club, uh, there are complaints that it, they're not always receiving full care. And then you mentioned NPR first, what is NPR? And then? Oh, multi-purpose room, okay. And then, um, why are they not always receiving full care? What are those complaints about?
I, I'm sorry, I di, I didn't hear the, why aren't they all receiving?
There, there was a complaint that they're not always receiving full care.
Oh, okay, so what happens is that because, um, and, and we'll get into this a little bit more with facilities. Um, so what happens is that we have so many, uh, groups that are wanting to use either the gym or the multi-purpose room that we're trying to get them in as we're coming out, and we have to close down the program so the basketballs can come in.
That's what it was, okay.
That's, that's what, and we received a complaint, so we moved that time back for different groups coming in by fifteen minutes. So, we have that little overlap time.
So, that, that was under challenges, okay.
Yes, so some are challenges, yes, those are, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Other question? And, so, and where are you at as far as capacity? Are you full? Are you close to capacity? What, where are you at?
As far as the number of students?
Yes.
Um, currently, right now, I would say we are not, because we're staffed for it. Um, I mean, our Robin Wood has really blossomed. I mean, we're already at what they ended at last year, plus two. Um, I mean, if we have a, you know, abundance of enrollment, obviously, we go staff, um, we go through the weekend process, you know, staffing and things like that. It's harder to find morning staff than it is afternoon, but.
So, space isn't really the limit, it's staff. Staff ratios have to be maintained, but space-wise, you're?
Staff, staff ratios are able to be maintained with the staff we have. But what we are getting into is some of the schools with the facilities that they have are becoming a limiting factor in how many more additional kids we can take, because we don't have that breakout classroom. Or if the gym is tied up for a curricular reason, after school or market day, we don't have two or three classrooms to put kids in. So, some of these programs, which we've never done before, um, we've never capped enrollment with really any of our programs. Um, it's something that we need to look at and potentially think about, and I think that's part of what we're trying to, to give to you here with the first part of the Kids Club, and you're going to see that theme throughout. Um, and it's not directly, strictly a recreation. It's athletics and co-curriculars, and it's, it's community use, it's school use. Um, that there's just an overall need for space. So, right now, there, this isn't a capacity issue, but there's some schools right now that if we had an influx of ten kids and had to find an alternate room, it would become an issue very quickly.
And sometimes there are daily challenges if there's, if the school has a large event. Where, where do, uh, where do we go? And then we, we have to find, sometimes we break up into different, you know, classrooms, or we use the gym, or hope for good weather and we can be outside, or, um, we just, we, we make it work, so.
So, you say that space, space issue is more on the back end of the day than the front end, because there'd be stuff going on after school? More often, it'd be before school, right?
Right now. Yeah, I mean, you've got, butting up against that, you've got some of the athletic teams from the high school, um, that have to practice at elementary schools. You've got, um, some of the school programs that happen immediately after school, some of the clubs, some of the things that way. So, there's, there's things that are always knocking at the door. I mean, if, if we let groups in at four o'clock, they would do it. So, we're trying to say we're there till five-thirty. Um, and then we've added a late night where we can go off to a classroom with smaller kids. But what happens is at five-thirty, there's teams showing up at five-fifteen. And they're dribbling the basketballs, and at five-thirty, they want to run across the thing, and, and we've got our program running till five-thirty, which takes tear down, and so we pushed it back fifteen minutes, which that trickle-down effect shoots somebody out the back, because nobody's going to practice till quarter to ten at night. So, now you've almost lost that last practice, but, so there's a trickle-down effect that's affecting everybody.
It's going to be a big stress on you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, guys, uh, I'm Paul Yonkey from the Rec Department. Um, a few of the things I do, I offer, um, learning activities at each elementary school. An art class, a chess class, a science class, and foreign language Spanish. Uh, but the biggest thing I do is run sports leagues. And any given year, I have twelve-hundred registrations for organized team sports, not counting clinics and teaching events and things like that. So, I, I got some of the stuff that I thought might be interesting on here, um, it's like youth sports trends. I started in two thousand and thirteen. That first fall, we had eight soccer teams and eight flag football teams. This year, we have sixteen and seventeen. We've more than doubled the program. We, I've added grades to those in flag football. A lot of people don't want to play tackle anymore, things like that. So, we've got, gone through sixth grade, we're going to plan to add seventh and eighth grade next year. So, more, uh, more spaces needed and things like that. So, I expect to add four to six more teams next year. On any given Saturday, we have over three hundred kids playing sports, and they practice once a week as well. Uh, so the good, we've more than doubled the program in the last few years. And, uh, we've been able to buy more equipment because of that, more soccer goals, uh, things like that. Uh, some of the challenges, um, with Mount Franklin out here, um, we, uh, that's where we did most of our, uh, outdoor activities. We had, um, flag football fields, then we just moved right over to the soccer fields. Now, we're currently at two different schools, so that my whole staff moves to a different school at some point during the day. And then, storage-wise, too, we have to keep stuff at two different schools, and I don't have designated, I had the garage door I could use here. I don't have designated storage at each place. Two locations require that are at porta-potties at each place. I used to just do one. It's very expensive to open the schools on a weekend for those, for the hours, just to have bathrooms available. So, um, it's only eleven percent of the cost to, to get a porta-potty compared to staffing it with a custodian on a, on a Saturday. So, yeah, ideally, it'd be great to have storage at all the fields, everything in one location, maybe some, uh, outdoor entrance bathrooms, something like that. That would be my ideal. Uh, then, just winter basketball, it's the biggest program we run. Uh, we average over four hundred and twenty kids every year. We run it from kindergarten through sixth grade. Seventh and eighth grade are not offered because we don't have the space. We would get teams, uh, especially for the boys, but, um, it's not offered because of that. Like, outside the high school, South La Glen is the only gym that can be split into two courts where two games can go at once. And it's only about, it's only big enough for maybe through second grade to do that. Otherwise, you're just playing one game at a school, and it's expensive to open a school each on Saturdays. Uh, on Saturdays, we utilize two schools every Saturday in the winter for, uh, for eight weeks, for nine to ten hours a day. Twenty-three games a Saturday last year. Um, we're probably trending to twenty-four this year. Uh, if we added seventh and eighth grade, we'd add three to four more hours onto the day, because we're, we really only can play three games an hour at the two schools. Be nice to have a, a larger space where we could have more, more teams in one place, as, less supervision to, instead of sending supervisors out to multiple schools. Every team practices once a week for an hour and fifteen minutes, and it's a split gym. We, well, forty-six teams, so we really have to cram a lot of, a lot of kids in, um, in the elementary schools. But, uh, it's a successful program. And, uh, that's that for, uh, winter basketball. And then, um, we do some adult stuff, too, actually, I had a meeting tonight before this. So, open volleyball, we used to get, we have, we used to average over thirty kids, or thirty, thirty adults a night on Wednesdays, and we ran that from mid-October through mid-May, uh, mid, mid-April, excuse me. Now, we moved it to South La Glen, it used to be at the high school, the nice, the nice gym. Now, it's at South La Glen from mid-February to mid-May. There's just so much demand from, for the gyms that we can't offer. We, and now our enrollment's down to about, usually, it's twenty people a night compared to when it was over thirty. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the country. I had a meeting tonight where we, we still, we have a Sunday morning, um, open I had a meeting tonight where we have a Sunday morning open play starting. We've got nicer equipment, some tension nets to make people happier. There's not good designated lines in any of the courts. You're too close to the walls, so we have to improvise with some rubber markers and things like that. Tape measures each week. I have a lot of people ask about pickleball.
So you've got new nets?
New nets.
I showed up once and I couldn't believe the nets. So I never showed up again, but maybe I'll give them another try.
Tension nets. It starts Sunday. You can try it out for a week for free if you'd like. I'll let our supervisor know that you're coming.
All right. What time's that?
It's at, it starts at ten to eleven-thirty.
That's my thought.
But we're going to have volunteers help start setting up at quarter two, so be there early. But we have, we've got new equipment. But people want that. And if they're, literally if our gym was ten feet by ten feet wider and longer, we could fit eight courts, we can only fit four. And then, we no longer offer adult basketball, open play. We used to get fifteen to twenty guys a week. Just don't have the space to put them in anywhere. And then the last thing, I want to go with...
One more thing? You didn't mention the badminton thing.
I didn't, I just didn't put it in there. We have a badminton league at South Le Glen. On Friday nights.
Right.
It typically averages between twenty to thirty participants each session.
It's big.
Yeah, it's good.
I've been there. I'm not that good compared to the players that are there.
Friday nights is a time you can get some gym space. I don't schedule any of my teams to practice those nights. They get South Le Glen's gym about thirty-five Fridays a year outside of maintenance and school activities. And then staffing. At any given time, I probably have twenty to twenty-five high school and college students who work for me. Almost all are Franklin students or graduates. Like only one I can remember that wasn't. In the past four years, I've hired, it's over thirty-five people. Most of them, by seventy-five percent, it's their first job, which is kind of a cool thing. A lot of kids like to work in sports or they're going to be teachers. I write numerous college recommendation letters. I get called for references in college jobs and post-college jobs. So it's a very cool thing to give back to the students that they can, and almost all of them played a rec sport before they reffed their rec sport. You're, Jeff, where is he? He does our basketball officiating training. Donates his time, it's great. But we do about a two-hour training once a year and try to get those basketball refs trained well.
That's another common theme throughout all the departments is using Franklin High School staff or community members. It's really cool with the staff is you'll see fifteen-year-old kids come down and ask if we have any jobs. They're handed an interest form, they have to fill that out. These guys put them through an interview. They have to come in, set up an interview. They have to give references. So it's really their first formal look at what a job would look like and how you prepare for that. So, and really throughout the whole department, they hire these kids. And it's really fun to watch these young adults come through the doors scared.
I've got some of my athletes are here tonight, the whole Hurley family. Julia, star soccer player. Jeremy, star soccer player. And their parents are both volunteer coaches for different sports. So I know, when I'm at a school, I recognize every third kid in the hall, at least. And yeah, so I know a lot of the families in the community that way.
So when the new Forest Park Middle School is done, will that alleviate? Will we be able to add seventh and eighth grade winter basketball, do you think?
Yeah, I believe we should be able to add it that way. And if, ideally, it would be, it's supposed to be a three-station gym. We could play three games at once. That would open up some practice time during the week to get four to six more teams practicing during the week. And Saturdays, if we could run three games at one school and then you still use South Le Glen for the younger kids, two games, that's five games an hour opposed to three games an hour. That condenses a day that we wouldn't have to be there till late into the evening, which no one wants to play that late in the day.
And I can tell you with Forest Park, we've had probably a line out the door since the referendum passed for groups that have been displaced or want more gym time or want to run tournaments that are wanting to use Forest Park. So, I mean, obviously recreation has some priority in booking things, but there's a lot of curricular and co-curricular things that are looking to get out there, too, to Forest Park. So once it's open and once we actually see the size and can run it through, the process that it goes through, that will be full as well. It just will. There's so many groups that are looking to get into facilities and need expanded programming space that Forest Park will be programmed like every other really gymnasium in the district. And that's from September through April, it's at a hundred percent capacity.
And then the one comment about staffing limitations, mostly at the high school, and the custodians being overworked. And is that all overtime for the custodians? Or, and I might turn to Mr. Millsor for that, unless you don't know. I mean, is that all overtime for the custodians to do the late-night gym?
Not at the high school. Because we have community custodians there that those days are part of their shift. But any other building, we don't have those, so then that's all overtime. And you can still have overtime at the high school when we have multiple things going on and it's from eight in the morning until eleven at night.
It's a discussion we've been having at our facility usage meetings, which is made up of Mark Ludié, Steve Blomquist, the head custodian, Sarah Nertl, the athletic director, myself, and Leah Boss. Is the capacity at the high school? You've got, if the theater has a large event going on on a Saturday or Sunday and you've got youth football on the other end of the building, you've got swimming lessons, you've got, you've got, you've got, you've got. How much can you truly expect one or two people to do before you start affecting overtime? And is there a capacity point at which with the larger building that we need to just maybe be proactive and start booking Saturday nights at a certain time or blocked out or Sunday evenings because groups are grabbing six o'clock on a Sunday even though it's not advertised and asking if they can have it? And we're really looking at, okay, that's overtime for one, we'll pay it. But it's a capacity standpoint for the custodians that are they going to work their seventy hours every week, some of these people? And so we're starting to those talks as well when you're looking at capacity for the facilities with the numbers and just the sheer volume of groups and people that want to use the facilities. Next is Chris Russo. We've got water in the pool, so he's got a job.
Hi, Chris Russo. Been here since July in this role. So like Brad mentioned, we do have water in the pool again, so we are able to run our community swim lessons. I have the numbers there on the sheet. I didn't have too much to go off of last year besides some files tucked away and stuff, but it looks like we're pretty consistent with previous years. But throughout the five sessions this fall, we should reach around five hundred and seventy-three participants. That's projecting a little bit. We're starting a new session in November. And that's everything from parent-child classes, kids six months to a year old, to adult, sometimes learning to swim for the first time. I'll just, and then besides, I do a couple other things. Coordinate the Red Cross babysitter's training, which is a very popular class and I think quite needed in the community. And then some computer classes as well. But going back to the aquatic stuff, I'll just touch on a few things kind of behind the scenes that we go over. So again, like Paul, almost all my staff are either in high school or just out of high school and college. Almost all of them are Franklin residents. Many are first-time, it's their first job as well. With lifeguards, they, and this is a staffing challenge throughout the country, they're required to go through a minimum thirty-six-hour training course. There's different ones offered, YMCA, Red Cross, Ellis. So they have to go through that thirty-six-hour training course, which they don't get paid for. We do have a program through the school that we try to utilize. And I work with Cindy, who's the teacher for that, to try to get a pipeline of guards coming through through that. But then, in addition to that, they have to, you know, do yearly certification upgrades for CPR, ED, first aid, and emergency oxygen. And then on top of that, we do quite extensive in-service trainings for all our staff. So lifeguards will come in at least once every other month, ideally once a month. And we go through two hours or so rescue scenarios, CPR rescue breath scenarios, spinal board scenarios, so actually strapping people onto a board, pulling them out of the water in a reasonable amount of time. And then for swim instructors, all our swim instructors have to go through at least two sessions of training before they're able to take on a swim class. Ideally, we put them through swim instructor training through either the Red Cross. In addition to that, and then as far as swim instructor and swim services go, because of the pool shutdown, we were able to get them in at least three times before we even started this fall session, which was nice. But they literally will get them in the pool and we'll have four of them be kids or participants. And one of them will go over best practices in terms of teaching for all the different levels. So you see a parent-child class would be taught differently than a level-five school-age class. And adults is a whole nother thing as well. So that's just a little bit, these kids are really motivated. I really admire what they do. It takes a lot of work. It can be not fun to get in the pool at six or seven or eight, you know, in December when it's freezing cold and then, you know, you've got school the next morning. So try to make their jobs easy and appreciate what they do. Successes quickly into, you know, I haven't been here too long. We've hired a lot of new staffs. We have a lot of new staff, only about four. Kind of flipped over from, because there was that three-month at least gap where the pool was non-operational. So we didn't have a lot of hanging-on staff from that. But we're getting them in as best we can and they seem to be doing really well. And then altering our lesson to accommodate some community requests in terms of scheduling. Not everyone can make two times a week lessons, so offering an additional one time a week class options, that kind of thing. And as far as challenges, no matter where you go, hiring, retraining, and training qualified and responsible people to work in what can be a dangerous environment is always a challenge. And scheduling conflicts, you know, starting pretty late because of swim team conflicts, which is not a problem. But it's pool offerings, pool space, what we got between lab swim and our lessons. Right now, we can't offer group exercise or deep water, aqua exercise classes, which is something that we and I are working on adding in the future, so that's that.
Any questions for Chris?
You do a great job and you had a big struggle this year, so thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
It was not easy, I know.
Next is Leah Boss.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
I'm also new. I came on end of June, so I've been here for three, almost four months. I'm a recreation coordinator. They brought me on, kind of focused on the fitness programs, the exercise stuff with the community. I also took on some, all of the facility usage in the district as well, so. Very interesting first four months. Going over this quickly. I'm currently running twenty-three fitness programs this fall. We have twelve instructors, so a lot of them double up, do different things, different focuses. The top three, we have our yoga, line dance, and zumba. These numbers have steadily increased. We've even had to add extra yoga classes, yoga sessions, because they just fill up so fast. We have really popular instructors, people love them. And line dance has also, we co-op with Oak Creek, so they come over, too. We have a couple, ten of them that come over for that. And it's just like, we have like thirty-five in the multi-purpose room at Ben Franklin. We're trying to get in there, kicking Kids Club out because we want to dance. So yoga has ten classes, ten sessions a week we do. It's very popular. We have had some facility issues, like trying to find places to have our classes. Some have been in the hallways upstairs at the high school because there's just nowhere to go. Kind of, I don't want to sound like that, but that's kind of how they are. They're very flexible, the community members are very flexible, they understand. But that's kind of something that I would like in the future to have somewhere to go, to be honest. In 2016, we brought in, these are some numbers there. It's roughly about six hundred and twelve participants, I would say, in these three top ones. This year, we're almost up to six fifty, so we're increasing every year. And every year, the data that I've looked at, I obviously haven't been here in the past, but from all the data, every year, it's been an increase in people. So every year is a different struggle for facilities. And this kind of goes hand in hand with my facility usage, too. I'm in the backend looking, trying to find a room for a class, you know. So it's very interesting on my part to go back and see, oh, man, we have nowhere to go here, so let's, we can't offer this class. Or if we have a lady coming in that wants to offer a special workshop on this for this specific thing, I say, well, we can look, we can try and find a room for you. Let's do what we can. And it's usually shared. Or we have like groups in the cafeteria. We have like a Palms activity group that is shared with the pasta nights. I don't know if you guys ever do this. Football players have pasta nights. So it's like you're splitting, quartering off the cafeteria for usage for four different groups. So that kind of goes into my facility part of it. If you have it in front of you, I have like all the hours from 2016 of facility usage. That's like, all the groups, these are hours that have used it. You can look and see some have gone up, some have gone down. Look at Ben Franklin there. They've gone down because the parking lot was fixed this summer, so you can't use that school. That's why that goes down. But if you look at the totals, we're roughly up almost six thousand hours from last year to this year alone of facility usage. So it's becoming a problem with finding space. And even in opening Saturday at the high school. I think you guys, Saturday and Sunday wasn't open before, but that has impacted that number as well. If you even look at, I printed out like our backend of the, this is gym usage at the high school, just at the high school. We have practices going till ten PM, nine PM, ten PM most nights. So it shows you just how packed it is. You have like volleyball, basketball, there's community basketball coming in. They usually pick up Friday nights because they don't have practices or there are games out there. There's pickleball, there's skills training, there's youth camps. It's just, weekends are becoming the popular thing to do. And like we said earlier, it's custodian overtime. So I've had to even block out from seven-thirty on Saturday nights for maintenance because we can't accommodate that usage. And Sunday, too, I'm going to be doing Sunday nights as well from five-thirty beyond. It's just becoming a little bit of a crowded thing.
I think the one thing to remember is that when you look at the elementary schools here and you look at, some schools are up in hours and some are down in hours. That's all worked out with Mark. If you've got summer school, at a particular school in the summer, you try and lay the hours low for them so that they've got the ability to recover during the school year and potentially that next summer or two. The high school numbers are up really because of Saturdays and Sundays and being able to use non-traditional rooms, like she talked about, the hallways, foyers, places that typically you wouldn't use, but it's going to be quiet for a couple hours on a Saturday or an evening where there's no other groups on that end of the building. You can get away with running a class. So that's kind of where you're seeing the numbers increased at the high school.
I was kind of a...
I'm sorry. Are the Saturdays and Sundays at the high school something new we did this year or has that been going?
We've had Saturdays in the past. Sundays has been an add over the last year or so with that. And that's a custodian adjusting, it's a community custodian who schedules adjustments so that that Saturday and Sunday would work, is not overtime. It's part of their normal school day or work day. But as you can see on those Saturdays and Sundays, there are so many events that are happening. And if you've got the Saber Center up and running with performances, they've got to support that as well. And then you've got usually rentals every Saturday of the Sullivan Stadium. And then you've got some rec classes, some practices and stuff. So it, like Leah said, Saturdays and Sundays are becoming very popular at the high school.
I've been up there for a number of events. And if you just have a couple of guys there, and they're usually on the opposite end, you need somebody to help you here, it'll be ten minutes before you can get them over there.
Yeah, they're running all over.
So we've definitely experienced that, absolutely.
Going back, like adding from behind the scenes, these, like kind of a pecking order of who gets what time. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, goes to athletics. They send their schedules in first in April for the following year. Then it goes to the schools, they get to put in their events, their concerts, activities, stuff like that. Then it comes to us, the Rec Department. We schedule our fitness groups, youth sports, swim lessons. Then it goes to the feeder and the booster programs, then they get to choose. And then it's like the community comes in at the end and they can pick and choose. You can go online, you can see what's available on there. So they pick and choose a time that they get. And they're usually the first ones that don't get it, like the last ones to choose and the first ones to say, sorry, we don't have space for this. But that, community members, even in my three months, has been, I feel like it's grown a ton, people coming in. We want to rent a room for this. We have a bunch of group of guys, we want to play ball on Thursday nights, can we do this? And they do pay for that facility, but it's kind of like, yes, but you have to move from school to school every week and like find your, pick and choose your time. You have an hour and a half here, you want to go an hour and a half this day. So it's not a consistent thing for, I don't think, any of the groups coming in. Even if, even the feeder programs do, the boosters do, they have a hard time being consistent in their practice schedules. in their practice schedules. Probably.
Yeah, and a lot of that is because the calendar for last year or so has become viewable online, so people can look at that. So if you're a group of people, said, God, it'd be great to play basketball again. And you go in there and you look, and you can, you can see it, so you're not calling us to run a report for you, so you can see what is available. And I think people are, like Leah said, they're picking odds and ends on things that typically were never booked in the past, because they can see it and they can plan for it. They're not asking us, well, I want a Thursday night, find it for me, you know, and yeah, well, there isn't, there's this. Or they're used to now saying, give me a Thursday here, this next week I'll go on a Tuesday. Could be at 7:00 one night, could be 9:00 at the next night. And you're seeing it with a lot of the parochial schools and the travel programs. They will pick anything up till 10 o'clock at night, no matter really what the age group is. Where our programming, we take the younger kids, put them in at the 5:30 slots, and progressively get later with the ages. But facilities are definitely being used by the community, which is what we want. You know, it's, they paid for them, the tax dollars are invested in it, so it's a good problem to have, but it's one, we've communicated over the last couple of years, it's coming, it's coming, we're getting to capacity. Well, I think we're at capacity, very close to that, with using non-traditional spaces and some of the things that we're putting programs in. And thank God, we've got really good staff, really good support from the custodians, because they make it work for us with moving things around in classrooms and hallways for us. But we're there.
A lot of things that I want to do in the future are very specific time-wise. I want to, the retired community in Franklin is large and growing, and they're very active, but they don't want 7 o'clock classes, they can't drive at night, it's dangerous in the winter. I really want to do moms with kids, and that's going to be a morning thing, you can't get into the schools during the AM times, there's nowhere to put them. Like if you ever want to bring their kids in, you can't do that, we don't have that option. So they usually go to gyms or they do other things. I wanted to do other things like a pound class, I don't know if you guys have heard of this, it's what sticks, it's really loud, I can't have it next, I can't have it bumped up in a multipurpose room with a gym, back-to-back. So you've got to find, these are the kind of things I'm looking to do in the future, but it's, it's a struggle with specific times being booked up and not being able to get places during the mornings.
One of the biggest struggles for us is daytime programming. We used to have programs in elementary schools, and we understand enrollment is what drives everything. So we're not in some of the schools, or the majority of the schools anymore. But in doing so, we really don't have a lot of programming for parent-child programs, young adults that have moved back into the community here, senior citizens for daytime programming. And the other key to that is they, they would like that parking by the door, they come in, not parked down on a faculty lot and walking up. Any daytime programs, fitness programs that we would run, card clubs for seniors, and then really getting into the AM and PM expansion of fitness programs. Like Paul had said, we've canceled the open basketball, we've limited the open volleyball, we got rid of a jazzercise program. We, when programs come in, really have to look at programs that are up and running, that meet the criteria, but maybe are only hitting the medium to see, hitting their minimum to see, is that a program that's going to go away to add a new program? And that's tough to do to people. So we're really at its base crunch, not only for us, athletics and curriculars are the same way, their out-of-season contact has changed for sports, WIA-wise, so spring sports can start practicing in January. Well, January gyms are tied up, they want gyms for that. So, I mean, you can just see there's a trickle-down effect, somebody finds a gym or takes press on over somebody, it all trickles down and somebody spits out the bottom. And that's the group, or groups, that at some point may be coming to you guys to say, I don't get what's going on. So we want to educate you kind of where we're sitting right now, and Forest Park coming on will help to a point, but it really won't address those key groups that I talked about earlier, the daytime programming, some of the younger groups, the seniors. By the time you can get in a building in elementary school or high school, it's 6:30 or 6 o'clock at night, and they're not interested in being out that late. So I mean, there's a lot of that that happens here that limits what we can do for programming.
It's important information, and I don't think the community realizes it, especially the seniors, as you said, you know, they know they don't have what they need, but they don't realize how it's being used right now either, because they're not, they're not in there right now, so it's really a lot to consider.
Yeah, and that pain is, I think, finally being felt by just about every demographic, every group that would use the schools. I mean, you could ask just about anybody from the musical to the high school sports, to rec, to any, they don't have the space they want, or you've got a varsity team practicing in a cafeteria, multipurpose room at an elementary school, because that's all they could get. So, yeah, it's, it's a great problem to have, it's one we knew was coming for years. Well, and as the community grows, and you're adding more teams and more people are participating in things and being involved after school, well, we're at that point now where it's fairly maxed out.
What about collaboration with other partners? We've got SportsCenter, big building just down the road, we have other gyms that, the private sector.
We've reached out to SportsCenter in the past, and they're not willing to do anything other than rent us the facility to run a program. So our program costs would go up immensely for that, and people are going to be, well, it used to be $23, you're charging me 48. Other communities are in the same situation, they're not giving away their gym time, they run like programs like we do. We've looked, I mean, we've looked at storefronts, we've looked at everything, and by the time you get into a storefront and do anything, your costs are prohibitive to really being able to continue to run that program.
So for, like gymnastics, we don't offer it in Franklin, but we co-op with Niskigo at a resident rate. So we are doing things with other places to, and we do the same thing for them, we offer some classes that they can't offer and share those facilities, so those can be offered in both communities.
You make a good point, though, about how the athletic expands, and if they get first dibs and it trickles down, and the people that get spit out at the end, as you put it, are the community members, they're going to be wondering what's going on. And is there anything we could do with, like, does the city have any space? Do they offer any of these programs? Any, they really don't have anything, I was thinking through my...
They've got the park space, but in the past, I mean, example, when we run tennis lessons, they give us two of the three courts at Lion's Legend for a period of time from 9:00 to 11:00. We, we've talked to them about expanding pickleball outside and having dedicated courts to that, and we would program leagues. They do not permit anything for leagues, they do not permit anything for practices. So we're kind of grandfathering reciprocity-wise of working with them, that we get some tennis courts for some lessons, but our lessons have grown, Paul wanted to run an afternoon session, we couldn't do it, because, no, we give into your block, you need to fit within that timeframe. So the city really doesn't, and they've got the parks, they really don't have any of the pavilions. Ken Wendell, we've tried to use that in the past, they don't move any of their equipment, so they've got all the tables set up there year-round inside. So you'd have to send staff people over to take down like 20 folding tables and chairs, and it's, yeah, it's tough.
Thank you for the report, though, that was very...
Thank you very much.
For coming.
Thank you very much.
Item 8D is the enrollment and staffing report, Mrs. Ellehausen.
We can try it, try using this first one over here.
I can pull it over for you.
All right. Good evening, members of the board and the community. I'm Valley Ellehausen, I'm the Director of HR and Public Relations for the schools. I've been here since August, so this is my first report. And I am going to go through some of our enrollment data, and talk a little bit about what I saw as I went through lots of data in terms of where we've been and kind of where we're headed. Let's kind of start with the big picture here, see if I can get this pointer, it's kind of there. So this is a seven-year trend of our overall enrollment. Now, do understand that we monitor enrollment regularly, a lot more often than the third Friday, but you know that the third Friday kind of has a magic about it, as it also determines our revenue in schools. So that is your typical marker for when you look at enrollment in districts. And what we see here is these kind of years here have a very stable trend through 15-16 in terms of the enrollment. But we certainly see that from 15-16 to where we are today, that shows an upward trend. In fact, since 15-16, we've grown by 176 students. As I work through the remaining graphs, I'm going to come back to this chart, and we'll talk about some of those critical data components that we would find within those numbers. When we look here at the elementary, that includes the early childhood through grade six enrollment, this is the first level I'm going to break down. And again, you see that kind of constant trend line emerge from these years here, and then again, an upward trend line when we look at the past two years. So again, elementary growth demonstrates that 89 students over, over that two-year marker. This is just a breakdown of our elementary schools, obviously at this level, we have the largest number of schools, and all of our schools are not the same size in terms of total numbers, but what we're looking at here is, is there any anomalies or are there things that emerge that show us that one school might be growing or changing at a different amount? And then what, within that data, do we know about that school's trend? For the most part, you see our schools, again, very similar to the past chart, growing in that marker of the past couple of years, but certainly Countrydale and PV have kind of maintained or sustained their trend line more so than the remaining three schools. Countrydale, it has a slight, and I do mean slight, decline in their numbers. Here you see the middle school enrollment, and what is interesting about the middle school is you see stability here in those past two years, so much more constant, but again, 34 students since 15-16 in the middle school enrollment. High school, again, very similar data points, and 53 students since that 15-16 benchmark. This is our breakdown by grade level as we sit this school year. And so what I'd like you to focus in on just a bit is these lower primary numbers, in terms of where are they in context, and particularly in context through grade eight. We know that we grow between the eighth and the ninth grade classes due to an influx from private or parochial to Franklin High School, and that that average is somewhere around 35 to 40, as you look back several years in terms of the gain that the high school sees. Now, we're going to come back kind of to this chart and then some of the study points. First, I would like to just point out that we're in a good place. Student growth is good. Certainly comes with challenges, but overall, we prefer to be a district that grows or certainly holds stable within our enrollment. So one of the things that we are certainly noticing in that trend line, again, is that upward mobility in the past two years. And so we need to be cautious about the whys behind that might exist. What we do know is that our open enrollment is not what's causing this. So it's not that we're accepting more open enrollment students. In fact, when I had a chance to look at the open enrollment in versus out, that has remained steady over the past three years with only a seven-student difference. So open enrollment is, in versus out, is very stable in the total numbers and is not what is driving the upward trend. We know that the lower primary, and in particular those K through three numbers that you saw on a couple slides back, are smaller overall class sizes. What research there has shown or tells us, especially the Pew Research, is that birth rates started to decline since the 2008 recession. And in fact, the National Center for Health Statistics data for 2013 shows that that's the lowest rate on record. In 2012 is also right there. Well, those are certainly the birth years that would be represented in those lower primary numbers, and so that's what we see in that smaller kindergarten class. And certainly, that's not unique to us here in Franklin. Most districts are seeing that in their lower primary rates of enrollment. So we know that exists. We should recognize that the new reconfiguration with Frank, with the middle school will help pull sixth grade out of those elementary schools, creating some capacity and space alleviation in some of the buildings. Now, the future considerations creates the challenges. Oftentimes with enrollment, you kind of need a crystal ball, and I'm guessing nobody has one of those, not your side job. So what we have to do is study this. We can't assume that this trend is going to continue and that two years from now, in 2020, we're going to see another 176 students. We need to monitor it and continue to watch it. I did have a chance to look back into the data over the past two years and try to figure out where do those new students come from? Why do we see some of that growth? 63% of the incoming students over those two years are represented by moves into Franklin. And so we know that the housing market is real, that there is, bless you, that there is a lot of turnover, and that turnover generally comes with younger families moving in, and demands for areas like Franklin. We also know that Franklin still has room for housing development, and some of those housing developments have taken on more starts, so that would be seen in our enrollment. Ms. Evans pointed out, and Mr. Cohen was there with me, and we were able to hear the state of the cities address, they call it the F-effect, that's how they kind of coined Foxconn. And so that's another thing we have to be cognizant of down the pipeline here, of how will that affect our enrollment? That development's only 11 miles to our south, so those are all things that we need to be cognizant of as we watch that trend line and see if it continues to emerge in the same fashion as it is today. Okay. All right, now moving into the staffing review. So again, taking a look at policy that is established by the board and the guideline ranges that are within that policy, and then really being able to say, okay, well, where are we today and what does our class size look like at each school against that expected guideline or that range? And this chart shows you each of the schools in the colors to the, over here, and where they are against then the grade level and what that overall average is. So I'll give you a minute just to look at that. As I've had now the opportunity in the month of August, which is always the month that is the most challenging for any HR director and any principal, because we're watching and watching and things are occurring and we didn't, couldn't have predicted them, right? So we know that this line right here is slightly out of alignment, and that is PV, first grade. And what we know is that if you... And what we know is that if you looked at last year, kinder class to this year's first grade class, that class grew by eleven. And that class grew by eleven in the majority of the month of August. So being able to plan for that, Mr. Fekler, I'm working with him. He has added some EA time to address those class sizes. You're always at a balance point of, do you break the class down? Have you already established class lists? Who isn't coming that we're unaware of? Where are those records requests? And trying to get all of that to fall into place before we open the doors is always the tricky part. But overall, our averages are very healthy in terms of those lower primaries and somewhat stable across the schools, yes.
I'm also looking at the chart here that...
Yes.
And I see we have, at the kindergarten level in Southwood Glen, we have two point five kindergarten teachers. How do you do a point five?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. What occurred there at Southwood Glen again, and working with Ms. Cody in late August, was watching those numbers. At one point, we thought, oh, they're good. And then another point, we thought, nope, they're not so good. It looks like we're getting more in. At the last minute, classes were set. She worked with her kindergarten team. And we added a fifty percent teacher that helps with the reading and math or just reading?
Just literacy.
Just literacy. Block to help break down the student population in that area to give more direct instruction and then regroup the kids back with their core teachers. So that's what it looks like, kind of in motion.
So that's how you get it down to twenty-two?
Yes.
Our parents, have they reacted to that or are they...
I don't want to speak for Ms. Cody.
Have parents reacted to that?
Been very positive.
Okay.
As a team, they work really well together. They play together. They're consistent with their language, that they use the students' expectations. So really fluid schedule for students and they're in a great routine.
Okay.
I think it's been working really well. And we do communicate.
We've had success doing it in the past as well. When a class size has just jumped, you know, it could happen in September. It could happen in October. And it's a really great way to break that down and make sure for that literacy piece, for sure, we have those class sizes small. So we, this is probably about the third time that we've done this.
I guess I would imagine that with kindergarten, because we don't have four K in our district, that you would be bringing probably a wide range of experiences for kids. Some can write their names. Some maybe it's their first experience in the classroom. So it really would be...
It's very true.
Yes, that's very true.
They do come with a wide range.
At that level, then you have to even that up and move forward.
We have very skillful teachers, as you saw tonight.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's quite impressive to hear the kindergartners and where they're at. And we're only six weeks in and you're right, and do they come with very wide range? When we look at the upper primary, here's our guideline, the twenty-five to thirty, the board set guideline. And again, where are we as we break down those upper primary grades? Looking at each school, looking at consistency within the system. And then some of those, again, anomalies, which the biggest anomalies we see are here in this fifth grade, both at Ben Franklin and Robinwood. Again, you know, Robinwood gained eleven fifth graders from where they ended in fourth to where they are as they started and opened the school year. Ben Franklin gained seven. How do we be sure that we can provide the best instruction for them? Most of what you see here is EA time being supported in those classrooms to address those class sizes. Certainly, again, within the range, it isn't that they're out of the range of within the ten percent. And they're thirty-one. It's how do you address it and then how does it look in the system against the other like schools? But there is, there is those averages. The sheet shows you that in the grades seven and eight, we're at an average of the twenty-nine. A point eight, close to thirty in those grade levels. And then the high school enrollment really varies by course section. But I did have a chance, again, to take a look at at least the core average class sizes and where do they sit. And again, at the high school as of this year, they are in the twenty-six to twenty-nine range, depending upon the core class in the section. But the overall averages for the science, math, social studies, and English sit in those ranges. In closing, the last two, in terms of the certified staff, which is your licensed staff, our licensed staff here in the district, we've hired forty-two. We did add new positions this year. Special education support in terms of needs there. English kindergarten, there's the point five FTE you see for Southwood Glen. Choir Associate Principal. And when I take a look at the turnover, the voluntary turnover, and let me back up just a sec, you, we experienced an increase in retirements. So this year to last year, we had more retirements, sixteen, as we closed the sixteen seventeen school year and had to staff to fill the seventeen eighteen school year. So that's reflected in that number. But when you look at the voluntary turnover, the voluntary turnover rate sits around eight percent. That is the regional rate. I'm sure you know that we participate, we meet monthly. As regional HR directors, there are typically forty to fifty of us that meet from the regional area. We track a lot of data to try to figure out if we have commonality, what's similar, what's dissimilar among us, and pair share and things of that nature. And what we know is that the regional trend in the southeastern area is eight point six five percent. And it has hovered there for the past two years. So as a district, we don't have a different trend there. Last year was slightly under eight percent. This year is right around eight percent. And so that is what is being felt and seen and lived in districts in the area. Our hard to fill is the same mainly in our experience here in Franklin. Because our forty-two doesn't necessarily look like the forty-two of a Muskego. But for us, math was one of the harder areas in some of the special ed concentrations. Is that different? No. It has been that way for a number of years. And retirement really was the main driver this past year. We did have information around different jobs and relocations of our staff. When you look at the non-certified staff, now, of course, you're encompassing a significant number, variation of groups from our maintenance staff to our food and nutrition staff as well as our EA's. We had about eighteen that we've hired. Although I would tell you, there are still open positions in some of those areas. I think we have the majority of them closed as I sit here today, so yay. And our hard to fill are really in those key areas. And it's partially the schedule against the pay, against when somebody is available, what the work is, and what our current labor market bears. So again, not a significantly different trend from last year to this year in the non-certified staff. That is what I have, so I'm happy to answer questions if I can.
With food service being hard to fill, are you finding that, are things flowing okay through the cafeterias throughout the district? Are there struggles in that area?
No, there are struggles. As I do building hours, I actually serve lunch. It's one of the things I do when I'm in there. I like to see how demand is. And I giggle because I didn't realize that doing building hours on Tuesdays meant pizza day. Domino's Pizza Day. Yeah, so Robinwood, we serve two hundred and ninety-five, which was probably the highest lunch count in a very long time. They average around one seventy to one eighty. So I was busy and they were glad to have the help. But on days like that, they monitor their efficiency ratios. And yes, there will be, there will be delays. Obviously, our focus is getting kids what they need so that they can also enjoy the time that is the lunch in the recess period. But there are areas where we are still very short. And I, over the next year, in working with the director there, we need to think about how to alleviate some of that and what are some creative ways to do that? I think, Tim, again, no different here than other districts, the ACA and the restriction of hours has forced some of that. What we ended up with is more of a bigger labor force, but a harder labor force to fill. So more positions for what could have been lesser amount of staff. But because of the limits around the ACA and restricting hours, it created a shortage for us, more so than we experienced in the past.
What are their average hours for the food service?
They vary. I mean, some are as low as three, some are as high as that five point seven five. My cursory glance, sevens would probably place them around four, somewhere between four and five as an average.
And I would say I'd be really worried about Ben Franklin and Robinwood's fifth grade if we weren't moving sixth grade to Forest Park Middle School. So I'm really happy we're doing that with the class sizes so high. It's worrisome to me, but once we hit thirty-one, so. I don't know what you feel about that.
Absolutely. Right. That is, that is a higher number. But you have to keep in mind that there could be a class of twenty-three children. And depending on the makeup of the class, they may need more support than a class with thirty-one because that makeup of that class is such that those students are strong learners, independent learners, et cetera. So you have to look at a number of factors beyond the number and provide the supports as necessary.
You mentioned the birth rate and how twelve and thirteen were really low years. Have you done any tracking to see, five years down the road, does that impact the number of students we have? And it does?
Well, the birth rates from twelve and thirteen are seen now in those lower primary classes that we have in K through two. What we do know is that the Pew Research Center that does a lot of that is indicating that there is almost a negligible increase in birth rates even as we sit today. And so, you know, is, I don't know that they would conclude that that's still the recession. It could be the way in which the current generation chooses to delay start too. So there are lots of factors that go into it. But the prior to two thousand and eight birth rates against birth rates today are significantly lower in the trend. And you're welcome to grab it. I have a copy of it from, right here in front of me.
Just curiosity.
Any other comments?
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item nine is the school board meeting debriefing. Are there any comments?
Lots of good stuff.
Thank you very much for bringing the students and teachers. Item ten is future agenda items. We have the twenty-seven eighteen budget update and approval on October twenty-fifth. The pupil services report, October twenty-fifth. New course approvals, November eighth. Youth option requests, November eighth. Were there any that were supposed to, the health report, when will that be now?
That'll be moved down to October twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth, okay. And then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
What about construction updates? Are we giving those?
Yes, the second meeting in the month, we do those.
It's not usually on future agenda items though. Motion to adjourn.
So what?
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight oh six.